We have been working on this Route 20 study for a number of years now and looking at how do we ensure that the development that goes on on the road, the development that's already happened as well as anticipated development, the road is there to not only be a thoroughfare, but also ensure the safety of the drivers who are on it. I want to thank both the town and Mastott and Howardstein Hudson for all their work on this. This presentation you're going to see right now was a presentation that we did in March. It is the same information, so if you saw it then, you will see the same presentation tonight. But certainly, the dialogue that will occur once you've seen the presentation, I think, is very helpful. And then at 7:00 tonight, we're doing the second portion of it. So this portion is from the Northborough Line all the way to Centec Boulevard. At 7:00 tonight, we'll be doing from Centec Boulevard all the way to Worcester City Line. And so right now, what you'll see is something that we've worked on for several years. We've taken into consideration a great deal of the feedback that we've heard from people and businesses along Route 20. And I'm very thankful, as I said, for all the work that's gone into it, and I'm looking forward to hearing your thoughts tonight as well. So, thank you.
So before we start the presentation, I'm also going to mention that we also have a set of role plans showing the proposed master plan at the front table that once we're done with question and answer, if people have specific questions, we can go up and someone can answer your specific questions related to the master plan. But I'd like to hand it over to Paul Nelson to begin the presentation on the master plan.
Sure. Thanks, Joe. So I'm just going to go over the presentation. This is the same one, like the representative said, that we showed in March. So the breakdown of the presentation is an overview of the master plan, review of some of the existing conditions in that eastern segment of Route 20, reviewing of the safety deficiencies, and then what the master plan includes. You know, the addition of lanes, intern lanes, signal infrastructure work, and pedestrian and bicycle accommodations. So Bob, next. So the original request by the town was to study the eastern section from Northborough Crossing to Centec Boulevard. Based on the kind of travel issues in the whole corridor, it's extended to include all of Route 20. And we're working continuously with the town to review these concepts and the different developments that should be factored into it. So the Phase 1, which is the eastern section scheme, was completed around January 2019 and presented at the public meeting in March. Go ahead, Bob. So this is how the different phases break out. Phase 1 is the eastern section of Route 20 with Centec Boulevard being the center point. And then tonight, we'll be talking about Phase 2, which is the western section. Okay? Again, just a close-up of the eastern section. We can keep going. So existing issues in that eastern section is intersection and corridor safety. There are clusters of crashes at South Street, Walnut Street, and Valenti Drive. There's also development on the horizon that would potentially pose capacity issues in the corridor on top of the existing congestion at the intersections. And then also, you know, we're thinking about other ways for people to get around was part of the study as well. So we did look at, you know, how many people drive alone to work and if there are options for, say, bicycling or walking or transit. Okay, Bob? So just the general corridor overall really has a lot of different uses along it. There's a lot of access points along Route 20, a lot of different driveways for each development in addition to the streets, a lot of trucking-intensive uses in the western section. And in the eastern section, there's a few business parks. Charles River Labs is off of there. And so that, we just went just as far as the overview. And there is an overlay with the town as far as the zoning is concerned. Again, traffic is pretty heavy, especially during the peak hours, and it's anticipated to grow. We can go on. And then if we look, so in this, you can see the Worcester commuter rail line actually is just south of the Route 20 corridor. So Route 20 on here is actually labeled Hartford Turnpike. And you can see that there are connections from the south into Grafton Station and from the east into Westboro Station, but there's really not a lot of transit serving the corridor as it exists currently. Also, in the yellow are different sidewalk and path connections, and so you can see that there's not many along the corridor itself. Again, taking a look at environmental conditions along here, and this is just if we're thinking of a master plan which would, say, widen the road or make any changes, you want to make sure you're familiar with potential environmental impacts. And the primary areas of impact would be down near Lake Conseguemen and the Lake Street area. Keep going, Bob. So now I'm actually going to turn it over to Bob, and he's going to review some of the safety issues in the corridor. And we're just going to switch seats.
Remind me I'll be standing up. Been sitting in traffic to get over here, so thank you, Paul, for leading the intro here. We had looked back when we started this work at the crashes that have happened throughout the corridor and focused on the intersections that you can see here. Valenti, Walnut, Route 20 at south, and then Route 20 at south in green, and then all the way down to Centec Boulevard. And we looked if anything else was happening in between, but we saw this particular clusters, as you can see right here. Highest one being over at Walnut, but obviously, there's quite a few other ones at Valenti, south and south in green as well. Go to the next one, Paul. Quick overview of what we've looking at when we're looking at crashes, especially if it's an intersection without a signal, if it's a stop control intersection. How many crashes, as we saw before, was 14 here. The non-federal injuries just showing if there's an injury or a fatality right there. We saw 21% of that being a non-federal injury. Angle crashes being the majority getting out of Valenti, what time they've happened, and the reasons that we see basically for this type of angle crashes happening. Now, over here, I think the biggest thing was people trying to make a left out of Valenti when they're not allowed to. Next one, Paul. Similarly, over with Walnut Street, again, the angle crashes seem to be the problem here, and it could be because of the speeds on Route 20 coming over also the hill from the east side of Walnut Street, so basically coming from the Valenti intersection, and the high speeds as well on this area. Over at South Street, we've noticed the 13 crashes with close to half of them being the angle crashes, and it seemed that quite a few of them were happening towards the afternoon, between 4:00 and 6:00 p.m., again with the high speeds and not finding enough room or even may not have the sufficient side distance when you're looking left and right to access Route 20 to do that move, and crossing multiple lanes in order to complete a turning movement out of South Street. South in green where the signal is today has about the same number of crashes, or exactly the same, actually. And here, we saw the rear ends kind of being the bigger or the more prominent type of crash, maybe because of the signal, people were just trying to rush through it and the person in front of them not stopping or is stopping, and people running into them. And finally, the Cherry Street and Centec Boulevard intersection, we noticed at this point at least 10 crashes, most of them being the angle crashes. People just trying to enter Centec or exit Centec, taking a left and a right out of there, or even from Cherry Street doing that as well. And just the fact that we have quite a few lanes here, and again, the high speeds on this part of the corridor. Moving over to the future traffic volumes, this is a little bit outdated. Some of these that are marked in blue have actually have been completed, but these are all the developments that we've looked at then and still looking at right now that are playing the bigger impact with adding traffic on the Route 20 corridor and quite a few of the side streets as to where they're built. For example, the UPS facility down over here, close to that Centec Park East and the Columbia Gas Training Center, we've been looking at that, and the Edgemere Boulevard all the way to the left bottom. Okay there, Paul?
I was going to try and do full screen, but I can't remember. Try it. Try F-11. F-11 does not work. Do you want to go to the next slide?
Sure. Yeah. So when we looked at the future volumes, the increase that we see on Route 20, this will be the same when we go and look into the rest of the portion of the Route 20 in the western side. You can see we have anywhere from 400 to 700 vehicles additional being added to the existing volume today of traffic along the Route 20 corridor. So it's quite a bit of traffic within the 20-year period that we looked at. We had the 2017 traffic volumes in the existing conditions, and we're projecting out to 2037 with some background growth, just in the general area, growth in population, and looking into all these developments that we saw as well. So we expanded that out to 20 years to see what the future volume could look like along Route 20. So the proposed master plan, we've kind of said we're going to be looking at the additional travel lanes and turn lanes onto Route 20. So the whole corridor will be looking at two travel lanes in this direction for Route 20 itself. Any signals that are there existing, we're looking at improving those in order to provide better signal timings for all the movements that are happening there, especially some of the left turns as some of the angle crashes seem to be prominent in some of these intersections. And then the additional turning lanes, like we said, the existing signalized intersections that don't exist today will provide those left turn pockets. Pedestrian and bicycle facilities, that's part of the Health and Transportation Directive of Massages Department of Transportation, and its such infrastructure program has to, or project has to look into providing connection for pedestrians, for all transportation modes, actually. This is heavily vehicle-oriented, this corridor. We need to look into how we can connect pedestrians and bicycles to use this area, as there's a lot of uses along this corridor, not only industrial. And finally, any improvement we're looking at implementing or actually proposing along this corridor is looking at improving the safety conditions as well. So we'll kind of go into intersection per intersection, quick pictures of what the proposed master plan right now shows for the specific intersections that we mentioned before, starting first with the Route 20 at Valenti Drive. It does include the Walnut Street South portion as well, but today you don't have a signal. Signal is the first part I want to point out. Over here, we're looking at proposing that signal over here to allow a lot of the turns that are looking at going into Valenti Drive because of the Boston Hill Corporate Center there that's being proposed at some point in the future, still in the planning stages. So you're looking at double left turns in there, some left turns coming out as well, actually mostly the right turns seem to be the heavier turn there. But the bigger thing, Walnut Street South, we're looking at restricting the left turns out of there and just sending them up to Valenti to go through the signal, which they can do safer. So the people that are doing that today through a signal will be able to do it safer. And Walnut Street, same idea, anybody coming northbound into Route 20 would actually access Route 20 through Valenti and the signal in a much safer manner. You still be able to access Walnut Street with a right turn into it to go to your neighborhood, or a left turn from coming from the east into Valenti Drive and using that little proposed roadway there, the connection, which, again, it's the master plan, it's not set in stone. That's going through a couple of private properties that we have to discuss, so that's even a visibility. Next one. Now we're moving over to where the Avalon and Dankendones area is, and the bigger part, the bigger idea here is to provide this two-way left turn lane. It's a median strip that people can, coming opposite direction, can do a left turn from either side, which is a very good way to kind of provide a safe area for people to pull off the main line with people going so fast, so they can wait somewhere where there's no traffic behind them and complete the left turn to access some of these drivers or side streets like the Avalon Way here. Over to Route 20 at south and Route 20 at south and green, those will be looked at together. At this time, we were thinking of the right turn out only from South Street, not allowing the lefts, but that's still under study to see if there's any other way to make that intersection a little bit safer. At this point, we're thinking about that, at least a right out only, but you're still able to take a left in there and a right in there as well with your own left turn lane waiting area in order to do that. Over at south and green, just the additional lanes that will be needed because of the additional traffic that was still coming along Route 20 and the additional traffic that needs to enter South Street because of some additional development on the existing sites that are up that way. And, oh, yeah, to mention again for South Street, I jumped the gun a little bit over there, I apologize, but the reason why we didn't look at the signal this time, it is too close to the other signal that we already have at south and green, and it didn't look like it was meaning the signal warrants, which, as engineers, we have to follow as specific standards like the Manual of Uniform Traffic Control Devices. And in order to justify signal over here, we need to look how heavy the traffic is, not only on Route 20, but how many people are coming out of South Street as well in order to be able to justify the signal. So at this point, we didn't see that that part was met, and the crashes themselves was another thing that we looked into, but in order to meet that part of our standards, it's not only how many crashes per year that need to happen of a specific kind that the signal can correct, and those would be angle crashes. Basically, your left turns or right turns out of South Street onto Route 20, you need at least five per year. And for the years that were looked into, we were below that, I believe, number three, but I have to look into my paperwork here, at least three per year have happened here. And you also need to have done already something in the past to correct that before even looking to the signal. So has something else been done to see if we can alleviate that issue? I know the District 3 Office of Massages has already implemented some measures at this point to help alleviate the crash possibility here with oversized signs at the intersection. To let you know, there is an intersection right here like South Street coming out, and cleared out a lot of the trees around the corners to improve the visibility as you're coming out of the roadway. So there's one part you can do right now, see if that helps out of the situation, and keep monitoring and going from there to see what else we can do before we really see that the signal is needed. And finally, Route 20 at Centec Boulevard then Cherry Street. If you want, can move to the next one. You see Centec Boulevard becomes a pretty wide roadway just out of, because of all the traffic coming out of UPS, especially heavy trucks, and then take a left turn out of there. And then on Route 20 itself, how many people will be going down to UPS and the Centec Park East that has been built already right there? So you need a double left to complete those movements. We're still maintaining the two-through lanes onto Route 20. So this looks like a pretty big intersection just because of all the volume that will be going through here or is projected to go through here in the future. Next one. For the next steps, as we had talked back then in March, we will be considering any feedback, even tonight, that you are welcome to give us some feedback on this Phase 1. So there is some room to still work a little bit more on this Phase 1. I know we said we're going to finish it by spring 2019 because we did that presentation back in March, but we still welcome some feedback. We're looking at actually finalizing the whole corridor of Route 20 towards the late fall of 2019, early winter of 2019, and we're still working with the town to identify some segments to prioritize for improvements at this point, which is an ongoing, it's an ongoing work with the town and the district as well. And I think that was it, right? Yep. That's all I had for this time.
Paul, can you, sorry, can you just go back to the Walnut, the Valenti Drive intersection there?
The proposed condition?
Yes. And also talk about the fact that there would be the ability to do a U-turn there as well the way that you're, so if somebody was needing to go west on 20, they could...
Yes. If you were coming from the west and just wanted to go back around, kind of doing the U-turn, yes, yes, of course. We've, there is a left turn pocket provided over here, sorry, it doesn't, you can't see it very well, but we've provided a painted median as well, one way to kind of line up all the lanes because of the dual left turn here, but that provides you the additional room to be able to do a U-turn when you will get your own protected left turn to do so. So there won't be anybody coming the other direction to hit you as you're trying to do that U-turn. Yes, and, yes, ma'am?
I have, I'm a parent at the Al Hamra School, South Street.
Yes.
Route 20, and I understand from your study that a signal light may not be warranted at this point, but I personally would just really like consideration on at least a sign right turn only.
Oh, yes. Could you please come to the microphone? Sorry.
I'm a parent at the Al Hamra School, and I understand that from your study that a light may not be warranted at South Street, but I'm very concerned about the left turn situation. And I would like to suggest maybe if you could study, or how hard would it be to put a right turn only sign for those people coming up to Route 20 from South Street? I mean, without a sign, people who, you know, people will turn left. And if there's a sign that says right turn only, they will turn right. I understand that you trim back the trees, which is great, and the bushes, but one thing, since, you know, we are a school, we get, we have dismissal at 3:00, between 3:00 and 3:30, and of course, depending on the time of the year, but there are at least several months where the sun starts to hit that lower part of the sky in the west, and not only do you deal with the Route 20 traffic coming very fast, like very fast, and people speed, they go over the speed limit. But then, if there's, you know, if some people coming from South Street are attempting to turn left, you, and I myself have turned left, I have to admit, in spite of the obvious danger, I have done so, then you start to see the sun immediately in your eyes, and then there's uncoming cars coming from this way and uncoming cars coming from the right, both lanes of which could be speeding, and it's just very dangerous. We had an accident recently, and there's, it's only a matter of time before an even worse accident, God forbid. So I think a right turn sign would be not cost prohibitive and save lives.
I agree. Thank you very much for your, for your comment there. I think signage is something that can be a little bit more easily implemented. I don't think it needs to take that much of a time, but I don't want to speak for the District Office as well for that. Yes, sir.
I'm also a parent at Al Hamra School, and just I heard you saying about, I think there's a 13 accidents.
Yes.
Happened in that. And don't you think 13 accidents and maybe loss of lives, it's really matters, so we really need to take this more consideration? And even, I know you said you need something to justify other light, but again, I think 13 accidents, it's something really considerable, and it's a school, it's a life of kids. I think this is another factor that we really need to take it seriously to consider other traffic light to help people. And we have no other choice. I mean, it's, the school is there, and there is, the kids is really in danger. I feel this is really, I need your attention.
Yes.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you for your comment.
Bob, was the number 13 or 3?
13.
Was on the whole stretch or just at?
That intersection itself, yes.
Just South Street South was 13, and South Street Green was another 13. My name is Dr. Noor Ali. I'm the principal at Al Hamra Academy. A couple of you have been on the email threads that have gone back and forth after the last accident that took place. Yes, in the last few weeks, we have seen the stop sign suddenly come up and the brush being cleared as well. Sadly, it's not enough. One of the things that's lacking today is a date, when is it going to happen? I looked at the PowerPoint presentation that was sent to me, and one of the dates I'm seeing there is listed as 2037. I'm hoping that's wrong, and that the plan is finalized way before that. I'm talking about 100-plus families using the South Street South intersection two times a day. I'm talking about 300 people. I have 281 people listed on my roster, increasing next year. I'm afraid if this was a public school, we would not let it slide so quickly or delay it. We would really do something about making these children safe. Putting a sign up, a stop sign that just went up two weeks back, that's when the two red signs and the stop sign ahead sign came up, putting a sign up is really not a lot to ask for, especially today, as I look at the presentation, I'm really seeing the only plan that is right now listed for South Street South is a no-left sign. That's it. There is nothing really happening there to make the U-turn easier, there is no traffic signal coming up, none of those things are happening according to the plan where it stands today, which I dearly hope changes after feedback. So what I'm really seeing is that we're going to say no-left turn. I don't see why we have to wait so long for that to happen. This room right now, if I can just have a show of hands by Al Hamra families over here, how many of us are from? I am certain that when we had this presentation in March, there were not this many people in the room. They're all here today because this community is traumatized by the accidents that have taken place. I kid you not. The last one that we had with Al Hamra just a month, not even a month ago, had five people in it, four children, a second grader, a third grader, two eighth graders, and a college freshman. Please don't say the number is not enough. If you were me and you rushed from the school to the highway and you hold a child whose head is bleeding, it changes the dynamics of everything entirely. Last year, too, there was a car crash with an infant and a mother involved. I don't have to stand here and list all of these things. My ask is that urgent action is taken, that this becomes, the plan can take however long it takes, the master plan for the corridor, for the two lanes on either side, and however many traffic signals come up, however close in proximity or far apart they have to be, honestly, at this point, it doesn't matter to me. What matters to me are that there are 300 people from my school using that intersection twice daily, and we're just being asked to use our discretion and not make a left turn. I think that a better temporary solution needs to be put in place while we wait for the master plan to actually evolve, and yes, Route 20 become a safer place for everybody, but that's really something that, that needs to take place now. I do have over here in the room with me today a parent, a person who was involved in the accident themselves, a parent of a child who was involved in the accident, and several teachers and parents over here who would make that intersection, make that turn, and, I mean, it's crazy. There's, there's nothing more to say. It's absolutely crazy to make that left turn. Teachers who have had their middle school students write letters for years at end, you know, for something to be done, and I really don't think this is something that needs to wait. A simple solution that just needs to be put in place right now. I thank you.
Thank you for your comment. If I may clarify one point before I ask you to come up. Yes, the 2037 was up there, but that's more for where a study extended to, to see how the future conditions may look like. A lot of the things like a quick, a quick and easy solution, maybe they can help a little bit alleviate the possibility or reduce the possibility for a crash to happen, is not other cars to happen sooner. That's for sure. So we've definitely got, put this in the, you know, in the section under our consideration further since we know it's a, it's a high-concern area. Well, thank you very much for your comments. Yes, ma'am, you can please come up to the microphone.
Yeah, I was, I'm Patricia Erickson, and I've lived in Shrewsbury for 20 years. And there is a private street that's almost right across from the street that this lady was talking about, and that's called Commons Drive. And Commons Drive is a private street, so I can see why you haven't... Can you hear me?
Yes.
Commons Drive is almost diagonally across from the lady's street that she's talking about, which is Green Street. Isn't it Green Street? Or Commons, or it's the, well, there's Green Street when the South Street lights are, and the next street is Green Street, which nobody knows, and they're almost across from Commons Drive. Now, Commons Drive is a private street, and there are about 500 units of housing, 102... a private street, and there are about five hundred units of housing, a hundred and two condos where they pay taxes, and the rest are rental property that's owned by Cochrane Management. Now, we know that there have been fatalities. The Shrewsbury Commons Condom Union Association was always very careful because we have an exit and we have a front and back door, so to speak. We can come out on to Route 20 and take a right to go west, but we have to go cross-traffic if we go there. So usually what we do is use Route Nine and take a right. So I'm not saying that there's a problem there, but I'm seeing it's, what the problem was, I was an elected town meeting member, and many other people were concerned because I was, I lived there fourteen years. So this was a while ago. But the, there was a speed limit on Route 20 at that time, and it was changed to fifty miles an hour at the Shrews, at the Northborough Crossing, which doesn't make any sense because if you take Route 20 from Main Street, Northborough, you'll see a sign that says forty miles an hour. So you go, when you leave Northborough Crossing, you go under the bridge, and the next thing you see is a sign that says fifty miles an hour. And this was a concern to my neighbors. And a lot of my neighbors did go to the, the school that she mentioned. And so there was a lot of concern. And I asked just about everybody and pestered everybody. And they told me that MassDOT is the only one that has the power to change the speed limit on Route 20 because it's a state road. So I appeal to you now to consider changing the speed limit as you enter Shrewsbury on Route 20 to maybe thirty miles an hour. Because you have all these residential people, you have a school, you have Northborough Crossing, a lot of people use it to go back to Worcester, Grafton. The truck drivers do a good job. Everybody obeys the speed limit. But I think fifty miles an hour with so many vehicles entering the Y, Christmas tree shop, Weepin' Willys, Dunkin' Donuts, Avalon has about two hundred and twenty-seven people living there. Those are all rental properties. There have been accidents here, I think you mentioned five of them. Well, five is too many. Speed kills. I, 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 please, consider lowering the speed limit from the Northborough to Semtech Drive, or at least South Street. I've heard that Auburn has a section of this Route 20, and they have it at thirty miles an hour. Now, would that be possible?
So.
Thank you for your comments.
So MassDOT sets the speed limit because we set the speed regulation for any roadway in the Commonwealth. It's not just state highway, but all roadways. And we can certainly look at this, the speed limit. Our policies require us to base the speed limit on speeds that people are actually traveling. So given the way that traffic currently travels on Route 20, it's probably not likely that we would be able to significantly lower the speed limit, but we can certainly look at, at the speed limit to see what's appropriate, to see what we can do. Certainly, one of the things I would just point out about the, the master plan is the master plan will help change the character of the corridor by introducing more sidewalk, the shared-use path.
I don't think there's any room for sidewalks. I don't even know how you're going to have bicycles go. It's not a divided highway. It's not lit very well in the evening. On No Moon, you could barely see where Walnut Street is. At least Commons Drive has lights and a big sign. From the Northborough border to South Street, you'll find twenty businesses, a motel, two, like I said, commons, five hundred units, two hundred and twenty-five. There's a proposal, this Mr. P. S. Chain or something wants to put something at the Y, near the Y. In that little street, Walnut Street, on both sides with all the trees, if you go down there, there's about twenty units of beautiful units. I don't know if you call them townhouses. They're between the trucks and the road. And there's so many things that are going to happen. Look at all the people from Westborough that are going to go down a market basket. That's a big draw. They'll go down twenty. You'll probably have to think of the future and not the last fifteen years ago, because there's a lot of movement and it's a miracle that some people don't, don't have more accidents. It's just amazing. The truck drivers are wonderful. They don't slow down to get up to the light. They don't speed to go light. Once in a while, you get some goofy kids that will go around if you're trying to go into Avalon Way. Some kids will go, I almost got killed a couple of times, but I'm still here. I guess I have, my angels are watching over me. But I really hope that you consider to lowering it back to forty miles an hour. When I moved here in nineteen ninety-nine, it was forty miles an hour. And now it's fifty. And we have so many more residential businesses. Shrewsbury wants to build up all of twenty. So it makes sense to me that speed kills and thirty miles an hour would be ideal. But whatever you can do, I would appreciate it. Thank you much for your consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you again for your timing and your comments. We do have some more time for more comments, so please come up to the microphone.
Hey, good evening. So I'm a resident. I live off of Arch Street, just before it turns into Westborough. My concern or question is the ability to access left in a reasonable way. So right now, when, particularly when the train comes out, there is a massive flood of cars that are trying to turn left onto Route 20. If the only egress to turn left is that, you know, Walnut Street to Valenti Drive, I feel like that's not really manageable for us as residents, particularly at that time of day. You know, living on the far east border of the town, and I have several kids in the town, you know, we like to participate in as many Shrewsbury things as possible. So, you know, being able to, in a reasonable way, actually get left out of our development is an issue. Right now, for safety purposes, I do tend to go out right and go all the way down and get back on Route Nine in the opposite direction. It's not impossible, but it is very time-consuming. And I do believe that that's going to become even more time-consuming as, particularly at the times when the trains let out on the weeknights. So my question is, would it be possible or not to have a mirror image of what you're doing at Walnut Street and Valenti Drive with South and Green Street? Is there a way that we could access Green Street so that we could have access to the light? I know several people in my neighborhood go down south, cut through the Appaloosa neighborhood, all the way, you know, it's like this giant S curve to try to access because of fear of that South Street left turn. So I'm wondering if there's another way that we can, as Shrewsbury residents, be encouraged to get to Shrewsbury a little bit more.
That was one of the things that we looked at, and you can address it, but there's a wetlands issue that prevents putting a road between South and Green there, unfortunately.
Right there on the south side of, between, South and Green intersection and the south intersection itself, there's a lot of wetlands right up against Route 20. It may require a little bit more looking into, maybe you can go farther down, see what the other right-of-way issues may, may be because of the private properties down that way. But it just didn't seem feasible to do it at the time we were looking at this. And we just didn't have enough of the information itself to see how far down we can go to do something like that.
Okay. Yeah, as a parent, you know, like the high school is as far as it could possibly be across town. So being able to get to those types of events and things is a quality-of-life issue, I feel like, for that neighborhood back there. My other question is, when you're saying that the South Street crashes don't yet justify having a light, I've seen in the past, I don't have an example for you, but where there is a, a double-light intersection, where you sort of treat the entire thing, you know, as one intersection, has that been considered at all? Because it would, it would, I would guess that having a light at South Street that was coordinated properly on both pieces of South Street, that that might be a possibility of allowing us to go left there, and it's still sort of de facto one intersection. Is that something that has been considered?
It was something we did to look at at the time, as we're trying to see all the options that can be feasible here. I think you'd, you'd still have the, the issues of the, the crashes because you have too closely spaced intersections. The signal itself, and it might help answer some of the other questions, can help a lot avoid or reduce maybe the chance for an angle crash to happen, and by turning left into a side street or coming onto the main road. However, rear-end crashes are not something that the signal will solve because a lot of people are trying to rush through the light to go through the yellow so they don't have to wait at the red. And seeing that these are very closely spaced, they try to rush both signals, and that's a possibility for crashes to happen over there. So while you're trying to solve one problem, it may cause another problem or something like that to happen. We're not ruling it out completely.
Right.
But it's, we have to think about everything, not only solving this one piece. We have to look at both pairs that are over there, so.
Yeah, it's a very good answer. And I will say that somebody else was saying that the truck drivers are pretty, you know, responsible. I actually find that to be not the case, and I see eighteen-wheelers just blow that red light all the time. I'm extremely cautious when coming from South Street from the Route Nine side, trying to then turn left to get into our neighborhood. I caution my friends and family, be so careful and take an extra, you know, couple of seconds of that intersection, because they're coming downhill and, and they will, will blow that red light very flagrantly. So that was my other question about, would a double light maybe sort of help that situation in some way?
I think for going downhill, it may be more helpful to let them know that the light is turning red. It's going downhill before they even get there so they can slow down.
Or adding, adding, I don't know, at the times, they're adjustable or something like that, you know, to allow for that?
Of course, yes, yes. Yeah, yeah.
Okay, okay. But just, I keep referring over to you, Ms. Kane, a little bit more, just because I think that, you know, the conversation in my neighborhood has been, we'd rather do things in Shrewsbury, and the way that this is going to be feeding us is in the opposite direction. And we'd like to be able to, to more reasonably get to town, you know?
We live on Route Nine now, coming towards South Street, eastbound. We have a thing that tells you the light is turning.
That's correct.
That's certainly something that.
Oh, that's, yes. That might be helpful. Yeah.
I think certainly one of the possibilities, what we looked at, the two-way left-turning lane, it's very useful for doing a U-turn if you think it's possible and you have the gap to do that, of course.
Yeah. So you were showing us that there will be a U-turn at the Valenti? I couldn't tell that from what I saw online prior to tonight, so that's.
That's definitely an area where you can do that, but again, it's too far for you to go. In the area where we showed the Avalon Way, for example, the two-way left-turning lane be right there, that's one area you can probably use to do such a U-turn because at least on one side of the north side, there's not that many driveways at this time.
Right.
That could be possible for a U-turn right there.
Excellent. Thank you. Particularly after the trains. I think that the, the lines are going to, to turn left out of Valenti are going to be really significant, having twice, because half of that usually goes to South Street and half goes to Walnut Street. And it's, it's quite the high-speed game for people getting out of the train station. So when I've seen the hoses where you're counting the cars and things, I think that, that that is going to double and that where it's going to be several light cycles all the time to try to get through that. So I, I'm a little concerned about that.
And we'll certainly look at it. Thank you.
Yes, definitely. Thank you. Yes, we have a few more people waiting back there.
Hi, my name is Nadia Amrani. I'm a parent of two children that were in that car crash. So as a parent, I don't want any other parents or any other person to hear or pick up the phone instead of hearing, "Mom, I'm home," to hear, "The kids are in a crash." And don't panic. They're just hearing those words. It's something devastating. I don't want anyone to go through that again. And you have to do something for that intersection. When you said there is not enough crash or accidents, we don't want one more fatal accident to do something, because that accident was really a bad accident. Thanks to God, the kids are fine. There is no major injuries or anything, but it's a really traumatized accident. So we don't want anyone to go through that. So something has to be done. We teach our kids to not to drive fast. Don't drink or be under influence and to drive. But we don't tell them, when you are on a road, that road is not safe, you have to pay extra attention. They are expecting to have safe roads. So the driver was my daughter. She is only nineteen. So she's maybe still learning how to drive, but she's not supposed to be in an intersection just making a turn and have that bad accident like this. So something has to be done in this intersection. So I don't know, a blinking signal, at least during those time where kids are out of school or during the rush hours or something, if you can't have signal that should be there permanently. Something that tells the others that are speeding to slow down because there is a major or an intersection or school signal or something to help, you know, kids coming and parents coming out of that street. And we don't want more accident there to justify anything else, really.
And I agree with you. It's definitely something we'd like to avoid. Thank you.
Hi, I'm also a parent at Al Hamra Academy. I have thankfully never been in a crash, but I've witnessed many. And up until you guys actually, you know, widened the road or whatever, if you guys can put in some kind of speeding camera over there and really enforce the speed limit, bring it down and really enforce it, would be, would be great, I think. The other thing is, I don't understand why you guys cannot do a double signal, because I just moved from Boston, and there are so many double signals, you know, where highways are going underneath and there are bridges over there. They're like double, triple signals over there that are well-coordinated. And this is not a tiny stretch. Like, I've seen three signals in this stretch in, in the city. I'm not saying put in three. I'm just saying if we can have, really consider a double signal that only gets activated, you know, when there's, you know, somebody on South Street who's, you know, coming in or going out. You know, you can put in those sensors, and it doesn't, it can be green all the time, but only turn red when, you know, someone is trying to get in or get out. I think that should be done right away. It's, it's, it's very dangerous to take, like a right turn there is tough, because people with fifty are doing sixty over there, easy. Like, nobody is doing fifty over there. And taking a left turn is, oh my God. You have to pray to take that left turn. So I think, I agree with the lady. I think it should be brought down to at least thirty-five, and there should be speeding cameras over there. And you guys should really consider a double signal that gets activated with traffic, incoming and outgoing traffic on that street. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Before the people standing, we had the lady at the front over here come up.
I was just wondering, when is the work going to get started?
A lot of things, a lot of these parts can be prioritized, prioritized based on safety or the, the need that, that's there right now. Nothing is planned at this point, just because we're looking at the whole corridor as one piece rather than each intersection by itself. But after we finalize the master plan, of course, a lot of things can be prioritized as needed.
Is there a estimate for times?
Not at this time. Not this time. We're trying to wrap up the, the master plan as it is for the whole corridor towards the end of fall or beginning of winter of 2019, before we can get to that point.
Can I just? The way that this works is we come up with a unified plan for the corridor. And then some of it will be prioritized based on safety issues. Some of it is, becomes, if there's a developer who's coming in, and they're going to impact a certain amount of traffic on it, then part of the negotiation with them would be to also see if they could help pay for some of the improvements. So this isn't all funded by the state. This has to be looked at in terms of, here is the plan, and as things come about, that's not dissimilar to what's happened already on Route 20. When developers have developed something, they've been told that they need to help improve intersections and do things. This would just be one unified plan so that we're not doing things piecemeal, and we're doing it as part of an overall plan that's been approved.
Thank you. Of course, we have a few more minutes, five minutes about left and within this meeting to get, to hear comments. We do, if you want to pull up the last slide just for, do we have information for, I forget. We do have the email here where you can send more of your concerns. And you're more than welcome to stay for the next part as well and provide us with more comments at that point as well. Thank you.
My name is Zudia Abdeljaber. I'm a Shrewsbury resident. I'm a mother of a Shrewsbury High student, of a Sherwood Middle student, and of a Hamra student. And in addition... And in addition to that, I've been a teacher at Al Hamra Academy for twenty-plus years, but since we opened up at this location on South Street since 2004. I'm a middle school teacher and I can tell you that from 2004, there isn't a day that goes by that I don't hear something from a fellow staff member or from a parent or from my own students in middle school about, oh my God, we almost got into an accident trying to pull in or trying to pull out yesterday, or we witnessed an accident happening. And this is actually a real concern for students, you know? Like I said, I'm dealing with sixth and seventh and eighth graders. And these guys for years have been like, this is dangerous, it shouldn't be this hard to get to school or this unsafe. And for years, I told, I've always taught them, if you have something to say, then you know what? You say it and you say it in a respectable way and you get your point across. And for over ten years, my students have been writing letters regarding this intersection and, you know, wanting to get something done about it. And a few years ago, I received a big, thick, yellow envelope with a copy of every letter that any of my students have written with kind of like this cover sheet letter that says, yes, we got your letters, we understand, there's nothing that can be done about it. So I felt that was kind of like enough is enough, just stop, nothing's really going to happen about it. I will tell you though, you know, as this woman came up and talked about her two children being involved in an accident, for those of you who don't know about it, that car flipped over multiple times at the intersection in front of all of these people. And if it wasn't for the kindness of strangers who rushed out to pull these five children out of a car that was upside down, then I don't know what would have happened. And I understand that at the end of the day, we look at statistics and all of that. But you know what? Whether it's five crashes or thirteen crashes or even one crash, that's one crash too many. And we do have a master plan and I appreciate everybody's involvement in this plan. But we also kind of need something to go into effect as soon as possible too because that's not an easy sight to see. People that you know, children, innocent children, just trying to leave school to be in a position like that where you don't know as you approach the car if they're dead or alive, if they're hurt or not. And, you know, if maybe a light isn't a solution, another idea, I don't know what the feasibility of that is, is maybe just like a school zone sign that flashes during drop-off and pickup times on Route 20, you know? It doesn't matter whether it's a public school, a private school, it doesn't matter what the school is. These are still children, they're impressionable lives and there should be something that slows people down and keeps these kids as safe as possible.
The current sign is on South Street, which is like pointy. On South Street South, like right out after you get out of the school, there's a sign there.
And the other thing I want to bring to attention is this isn't just an issue that affects our school. There's a lot of residents, some of which are sitting here today, that have to go out that same exit that we all do when we try to exit the school. And they're being affected by it. And I'm not going to lie to you, I've been in situations where, you know, maybe I had to make a choice whether it's to turn left or right because right is just as scary as left, just to let you guys know, when there's traffic coming and trucks speeding. But the thing is, like, you know, you feel the pressure when you look in your rearview mirror and there's like fifteen cars, twenty cars behind you waiting and you have to wait to make a safe turn. So I appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
We appreciate your comments. Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Soleimani and I'm a student from Al Hamra Academy. And so I saw, when I heard about the car crashes, it like got me really scared because like I've never been in a car crash before and I've never known how traumatizing it can be and how scary it can be because like it's like life and death. You could die in a car crash and it's really scary. Like you never got to like get a job or go to high school even and you are, you don't get to do it. So I think that my suggestion so that we, the left turn can be more safer is so if we can't add a traffic light on this South Street and Route 20 part, then maybe like the traffic light ahead and like the Route 20 and South Street and Green Street. Maybe what, like, so when the Route 20 part is green, then there's a whole bunch of cars that are driving and then when you, and then you have to take a long ti, it takes a long time for you to take a left turn onto South Street or from South Street onto Route 20. So maybe, and then once the, and once that light turns red and then the other part turns green, then there's some cars that turn and then you turn right. And so then you have to wait for those cars and then it keeps on going and it takes a long time to wait for a safe spot. And also like there's people behind you and sometimes they honk at you and it's like, and it's like, it gets you like angry and so you just want to take the turn, but you have to wait. So my suggestion is that maybe we should have a moment where all of the lights are red and then, because then there's no cars coming anywhere and then the people can just take a left turn when they want to or so that it's safer and so then they, yeah, so that it's safer.
Thank you, thank you very much. Great idea. Thank you for your comments and your time. Great idea on that one. Are you okay? Good, thank you. Last comment for the night so we can get ready for the next part. Sorry, go ahead.
Thank you so much for the time and everything. As you're hearing, I'm also an Al Hamra parent. And every parent is requesting only one thing. It's sad to see that you present the plan, but you never mention in your plan, you're mentioning the future that we're going to do the, you know, the paths for the bicycles, but you never mention that there's a school that exists there. Not now, for so many years. If Shrewsbury is not going to take it seriously, then how are you gonna, I don't know, convince MassDOT to put a light? I don't see in your plan that you mention that there's a school and it's not only preschool, it's preschool to eighth grade. As Principal mentioned, there are more than three hundred families. So I don't think so. You guys are sorry to say that, but thinking about children's life, looking at the statistics, you want like more, I don't know, children's life to be put a light there? Or I, I don't understand. So if the Shrewsbury is not going to take it seriously, I don't see that you guys convincing it to MassDOT. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment and I'd like to say, apologize first if you felt like we didn't take that into consideration. Shrewsbury is taken into consideration, the schools, of course. As soon as we started with this work, it was a point of concern from the beginning. That's why what we've shown for a proposed condition at this time was what came up. But of course, it's, hearing tonight, all the concerns for South Street. It's definitely something in the works and we can look into something that can happen in the short term than waiting ten or twenty years for something more to happen.
So I think that what I'll mention right now is, as Bob mentioned before, we do have an email address certainly for comments that you want to send in so we can provide responses to them. Also, what we're, what we'll do because we have the presentation starting on the western segment from Centec Boulevard West to the Worcester City Line at seven. I think what we'll do is we'll stay here. We do have the plan. So if certainly if other people do have questions and want to discuss concerns they have between now and seven o'clock, we can certainly do that, do that as well.
Is there a deadline at this point for providing any written comments for this stage?
There's, there's, there's no deadline. Certainly, certainly comments within the next couple of weeks would be great because, you know, we're going to have the two meetings tonight and be incorporating all, you know, those comments as we can into the final master plan. But as Bob mentioned, we'll be working on it through the summer into the early fall. So certainly if there's something that comes up in a month or so, certainly please feel free to reach out to us. And as, as, as Bob mentioned before, you know, the main goal of tonight was to talk about the master plan improvements. That doesn't mean that MassDOT's not going to be looking at what can be done in the nearer term to address issues along the entire corridor and certainly the concerns that were brought up related to the South Street intersection as well.
Thank you again for everybody. I think as Joe mentioned before, we accept any comments to come up over here. But I think we have to adjourn this meeting right now so we can also prepare for the next portion as well. We provide updates to the town and the town has also the Facebook page, I think they can put it on. And I'll let Kristen mention.
So my name's Kristen Last. I'm the Assistant Town Manager here for the town of Shrewsbury. We have these presentations up under the DPW website, under the Engineering Division, as well as the Board of Selectmen website. You can also sign up for news, news flashes through our website. And if there's any alerts or extra meetings, you'll be alerted in that way. You can also follow us on Facebook and Twitter. We've been posting these presentations in that fashion as well. If you need a contact for the town person, myself or DPW Director Jeff Howland are here tonight as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Kristen. And thank you everybody for coming tonight and for your comments.
Good, good evening, everybody. Good evening. Welcome everyone to the Public Informational this evening for Route 20 Master Plan in Shrewsbury. My name is Joe Frohley. I'm the District Three Traffic Operations Engineer from, from MassDOT. I'd like to introduce our team again for some people who were at the previous meeting on the eastern segment of Route 20 a little while ago. We have Erin Kinnahan, who's the District Three Traffic Engineer. And from Howard Stein Hudson, who's MassDOT's consultant for the master plan, we have Paul Nelson and Bob Southopoulos. So what we're going to do this evening is go through a brief presentation on the master plan focused on the western segment from Centec Boulevard West to the Worcester City Line. After that presentation, we'll open up to questions and answers. And we also have a full-size set of plans that's available after questions and answers are over. So if you do have specific questions about a specific location on the plan, we can go through it that way as what we have in the presentation covers some of the highlights of the corridor, but doesn't necessarily cover every, every piece of the corridor. So with that, I'd like to hand it over to Paul Nelson to start the presentation.
Great, thanks, Joe. So as Joe said, you know, this is the agenda for tonight's meeting. We're going to provide an overview of the master plan process, review some of the existing conditions in the study area, the safety deficiencies in a few key locations, and then review the proposed master plan, starting from kind of the standard layout and design and then going into a few of the areas where we had to deviate from that for either safety concerns or space constraints. And then also take a look at, and some of the signal infrastructure work and pedestrian and bicycle accommodations. And as far as next steps, you know, after we have this meeting and receive feedback from all of you, we'll, we hope to wrap up the full master plan, which would be both a conceptual design and study to accommodate, to accompany it by late fall, early winter this year. So through this master plan, we've been coordinating pretty regularly with town staff. And actually, it started, it kind of has two segments. In March, we were here to discuss the eastern segment, which was from Centec Boulevard East to the North Borough Town Line. Today, we're here to talk about the western section. And like I said, the report will be done in the fall. So this figure shows the, the section that we're discussing. I'm going to get up for a second. So here's Centec Boulevard down the middle here and you've got the west, West Borough Shrewsbury line, excuse me, and then the Worcester line down here. Two things we want to highlight about the western segment is in addition to the work that we're doing, there's actually a separate design underway at Route 20 and Grafton Street to address some of the safety issues there. And then there's also work at Route 20 and Lake Street where MassWorks grant is underway to help support the redevelopment of the Edgemere Drive in down that way. So here's a close-up of the western segment, again highlighting the two locations of the additional work. And just also, you know, to keep in mind that there is the commuter rail line to the south of the corridor. So the existing conditions in the corridor that we'll be discussing, a big one is safety in the corridor at the intersections. You know, you've got a high-speed facility with a lot of driveways, there's a lot of access management concerns. And so we covered the safety issues at South Street, Walnut Street and Valenti Drive in the last meeting. And that, those materials are available on the town website. And then today we'll be discussing primarily looking at safety issues at Stony Hill Road at Route 20 and then also at the 140 interchange and just in general, the access management. Other issues in the corridor are, it's already got its certain points of congestion. And with a development that's planned in the area, you know, developments like the UPS distribution facility and some of the others, there'd be growing needs for traffic capacity in the area and we need to try and support that. And at the same time, we also want to try and introduce options for people in the corridor. And there's currently a lack of bicycle and pedestrian accommodations. So if we're thinking about kind of the general character of the corridor in general, I've overlaid the zoning, but the idea is that, you know, you've got a lot of high-intensity truck uses, you've got UPS distribution facilities, you've got the other trucking areas down near Flynn's Truck Stop. Near the northern end, you're seeing more traditional office parks, you know, you've got Charles River Laboratories just off South Street and plans for similar developments in the area. And then as far as the other modes of transportation, so right here, Route 20 is in the middle here and you notice that it's kind of absent a lot of the other facilities in the area such as sidewalks and the connections to the commuter rail, which come in over here and up from Grafton here. Another thing that we're looking at just in far as the conceptual design is the potential environmental impacts. We just want to keep these in mind because they can impact the permitting and the feasibility of the development of this master plan. If you're looking at wetlands impacts, there are a few along the corridor, but many of them are focused at the western edge of the corridor where you have some bridges and culverts over southernly Quinsegman there. The other thing that we did want to also reference is that the town does have a complete streets prioritization plan, which is a process that the state has sponsored, there's a funding bucket for that. And they've, and the town's committee has identified things like new sidewalks and bike lanes along many, along Route 20 and several of the streets that intersect it, such as Lake Street here, Centec Boulevard and Cherry Street. So I'm now going to turn it over to Bob, who's going to cover some of the safety issues and go over the design, master plan design.
Thank you, Paul. All right. So as Paul had mentioned, the area we're looking at is west of Centec Boulevard all the way down to the Worcester Town Line. And we focused at a few of these locations where we saw quite a few accidents occur. One area being Stony Hill Road, east or west, about the same number of crashes right there. Grafton, pretty high with ninety crashes. There is a, MassDOT actually has done recently a road safety audit right there and that document should be released at some point for everybody to look at to see what are the safety issues they've discovered there. And we'll talk shortly about them in the following slides. We have Lake Street with its own forty-seven crashes. And as we're going towards the Worcester Town Line, we're still looking at above eighteen and twenty, twenty-two crashes right there. I will spend some time on the Stony Hill Road intersection. We know it's quite a bit of a concern, an area of concern. And I will talk about the east and the west sides as well. We looked into, we were asked to see if we can actually do a signal over here as well. So again, we had to follow our guidelines, the standard guidelines that we have to follow every time when a signal is requested. And there will be the traffic for eight hours in one day to meet a specific threshold. So if it's heavy traffic, not only on Route 20, but also on the side street that's intersecting Route 20, this one being Stony Hill Road, if those meet certain thresholds for a total of eight hours. Not only one or two hours, but we're talking about a good third of the day. So you have to meet those thresholds first. So you have to meet those thresholds first. And the crash experience is another one that we looked at for the warrants. How many crashes have happened over here? And there's kind of three caveats to actually meet that warrant. Again, how many crashes per year have happened? They can be corrected by a signal. So a signal doesn't correct every single crash. It helps a lot to correct the angle crashes, any turning movements, cutting out of the side street or the main line into the side street. The signal will help correct, but the rear-end crashes are something that doesn't correct, and you might actually see an increase on those. And then that also has another caveat that have we tried something else before we think about the signal to help resolve those problems? Again, it does look a little bit into the volumes as well, but the other two are the more important ones. So these are the type of crashes we're talking about, the angle crashes. It shows that the two angle crashes in the three-year period that we studied, 2015 to 2017, for this specific work that we've been doing for the DOT. And it just shows that one crash was somebody taking a left out of Route 20, sorry, Stony Hill Road east, and somebody going on Route 20 eastbound towards Centec Boulevard, hit somebody taking that left turn out. And then somebody again tried to make a left turn, but somebody going Route 20 westbound towards Worcester, hit that person coming out of Stony Hill, making a left out of Stony Hill. So there's only two of such crashes that we can correct with a signal that happened in a span of three years that we've studied. Of course, there's more in the previous years, but we need to look into the per-year fact. So back to the numbers that we've seen right there. Those angle crashes get up to that 27%. It seemed that most, quite a few of them happened in the evening. And the reasons we can see to those are just high speeds. Maybe during the peak hours, there's not enough gaps between the vehicles that are traveling that fast for somebody to complete their turn on Route 20. And although it's marked as one lane in each direction, we've seen and we've been told that people use that shoulder to kind of go around people that are going slow. So that's why the crossing multiple lanes came up, because people traveling on that shoulder as well. Similar idea on the Stony Hill Road West, but we also add in the driveway for the tri-state truck area there. Not that there is a problem, just that this is a four-leg intersection instead of a three-leg intersection that the eastern side is. But again, we see the 13 crashes here. Again, the angle crashes being only about, not only, being about 15% here and happening during the morning. Out to Grafton for the 90 crashes that we've seen there. About 21% of those 91 crashes involved an injury, and one actually involved a reported fatality. So that was a very, that was a big, big issue right there. Again, half of those crashes involved the angle crashes. Somebody trying to take a left into Grafton or even coming out of Grafton to access Route 20. And we've actually noticed because of all the access points, all the driveways on either side of Grafton Street, those being a little bit of an issue as well, as people trying to make a left in there or coming out as a left, getting hit by people on either side of Route 20. The reason kind of in the section why those crashes have happened, we've noticed that they don't have their own left turn signal or a lane to wait and take that left turn. So that's a few of the issues that we noticed, and the multiple access points that I've mentioned before. Moving over to Lake Street, which was pretty high itself. And as high as Grafton, it had about 47 crashes, but that's quite a few crashes as well. We noticed most of them being rear-end crashes. So people coming at the red light. The person in front of them maybe doesn't want to go through the yellow, but the person behind does. That's one crash that happens, trying to rush that light at the signal, right? And we've also noticed that, as you know, going out to the east, Lake Street, sorry, not Lake Street, Route 20 goes down to one lane going eastbound. So I think just people in general trying to rush that light and also trying to get in front of somebody else as the lanes merge down, kind of adds to that problem with the crashes here. Now to move over to the future traffic volumes. These are all the projects, the planned projects. Others have been in development, they're in development right now or being built or have been built. The green ones are the ones that have been built. The blue dots are the ones that are in the planning stages or being built right now or just starting being built. A few of them, Centec Park East has been completed in the Columbia Guest Training Center. The UPS is in the planning stages. And the Pointed Hill Farms should be, I think, changed to the green because we've heard they've already started a little bit of construction, cleaning up the area for their own development to go in. So the proposed master plan proposes two through travel lanes on Route 20 in each direction. We are looking at improving the signals along this western section. And there were only three, as you know, the Edgemere Boulevard one, Lake Street, and Grafton Street at this point. So trying to provide some signal improvements right there, which may also involve the additional turning lanes that I mentioned here. But what else, whatever else we need, turning lanes or a two-way left turn lane. And I'll show you the example of what that two-way left turn lane looks as we're coming up. Pedestrian and bicycle facilities are on Route 20 with a shared-use path on the south side of Route 20. The safety improvements at the deficient locations, wherever we can improve the safety, the proposed master plan will try to do that. And I need to point out that any right-of-way impacts, so the properties that are along Route 20, or the cost at this time, or even as she mentioned, the wetland impacts, as we've shown before, there are quite a few wetlands, especially towards the lake area, haven't been delved into detail. But you can see from the plans how some of those areas can be impacted with this master plan. To give you a general idea of what a cross-section looks like over here, we're looking at four 11-foot travel lanes separated by painted four-foot buffer when we're talking about any vehicle accommodations. And both sides, we have that four-foot shoulder on the road. But then when we're looking towards the pedestrian, the bicycle accommodations, your left side of the screen is the five, five-and-a-half-foot sidewalk. That would be the northern part of Route 20. Or the one is going, to your left, is you're going towards North Borough and West Borough. The 10-foot shared-use path would be on your right side if you go in the same direction towards the east. Should be the south side of Route 20. The, oh, sorry, can you go back to that one? To note, the whole addition, if you add all these widths up, that whole cross-section takes about 78 feet. And as we mentioned before about the right-of-way impacts, we have areas that vary between 53 feet and 75 feet. I think there's a few areas a little bit wider, but we need to take that into consideration. So to kind of go and show you some areas that we've put up over here in the presentation as to what those proposed conditions will look like, I'll go through the, the next slide will actually show that. But we do have all the printed-out plans. You can, you're more than welcome to come up and see them at the end of the presentation and the question period. We'll start first with Stony Hill Road east at Route 20. And at this time, seeing that there was a concern of trying to come out of Route, sorry, Stony Hill Road and get onto Route 20, being how hard it is today and seeing some of those angle crashes happening, we've looked into providing this two-way left turn, a two-way left turn lane. It's a 13-foot-wide lane where you can do left turns, either get into Stony Hill Road or even access. And this property is vacant right now, but it's also in the future, if that becomes, if somebody picks it up, they can use the same lane to go in there. And allows for that driveway into the, one of the Pointed Hill Farms development as well. And of course, for this driveway over here for the church. So the idea behind this was that you can do a two-point turn, as nobody really would come behind you over here. There's no driveway over here to access. So you can come up over here, wait until there's a safe gap to get onto Route 20 and catch up to the speed of Route 20, instead of just jumping straight in there and trying to match the speed of the current Route 20 traffic. Similarly, if we, we were thinking about maybe expanding it down that way, maybe to help you actually do a U-turn if it's easier to see the traffic. But that's still under consideration. Moving over to the other side of Stony Hill Road, Stony Hill Road West. Similar idea on the western part of the intersection with a two-way left turn lane. And on this side, we're just providing you with your own left turn park. Again, somewhere you can wait to take a left turn into Stony Hill. But as today, that tri-state property kind of has that pullout for the trucks to do that right turn in there. We try to maintain that so we can pull them out of the traffic and people can continue through. And the two through lanes on either side of Route 20 stay here. And the shared-use path, as you see it on the south side, five-foot sidewalk on the north side, five-and-a-half-foot sidewalk. Next one, Paul. We're going to go into the Route 14 interchange area now and Grafton Street. I'll show up as one graphic. This is where our cross-section changes a little bit. What we have, what we're looking into, and I'll try to say why, to explain why we looked into only 69 feet. But you can see, we took away the four-foot painted median, and the bikes are not over here. We're trying to see if we can shoot them down. One of the local neighborhoods just uses the roads there that are generally lower speed. And that's just an idea at this point, and nothing that's set in stone. But they can use parenting and clues to come up around. Again, it's just an idea at this point. But if you want to move over to the next one, Paul. The reason being, the bridge and the columns for Route 140 for not being able to keep the bicycles onto Route 20, and also a lot of the properties right up against Route 20 here near Grafton. What we've already shown seems to impact a little bit the properties, especially down here on the southern side. So today, as you pass the signal going eastbound on Route 20, you pass the Grafton Street signal, coming from two lanes trying to go through on Route 20, you're coming into like what they call a trap lane. This outside lane becomes a right turn only to get you onto Route 140, correct? So we've seen that be one of the issues that we've seen so many crashes happen over here onto Route 20. We believe that to provide you with a two-through lane still, while maintaining that access to that Route 140 ramp, we'd have to do some of, some kind of a pullout. It'd be easier to see on the plans and on this graphic. But they would have to impact a little bit of property down here in order to be able to provide that. But that would be able to alleviate some of that safety problem of getting stuck in a trap lane, trying to merge over to the left to the inside lane in order to continue through onto Route 20. The ramps themselves, we're looking at this point to keep them the same because anything with the ramps, or even the bridge, to see if we can keep the pedestrians and the bikes over here, who require a major interchange project, which is not part of this study at this time. But even at that, to even do anything with the sidewalks there, we still have to look at kind of impacting the abutments and the foundations of the bridge right there. So we have to see how feasible that is. And also, the four lanes under Route 20. We are looking, we're working with the state to get exactly what's that width under that bridge and between the columns to see if we can fit four lanes without even touching the bridge. So those four lanes at this time may not be really feasible, but we haven't confirmed that yet. Moving over down by Lake Street and the MassWork projects that Paul had mentioned, if you want to move to the next one. The idea here was to keep the access to that Edgemere, to maintain the access that the Edgemere Development was proposing at this time. One was at the lakes, or that's the type of the Lake Street intersection there, where there's no leg to the intersection. They were going to create one, so we're trying to maintain that access there. And then provide, they were proposing to provide another right turn out, but they allow lefts in and rights in to into a second point of access east of the Lake Street intersection. Their current driveway, that current driveway that exists there for the old Edgemere Drive-In will be closed down. The intersection itself offers those left turn lanes in order to be able to access either the Edgemere Development or Lake Street. And their own left turn lanes out of the Edgemere Development is expecting some, quite a bit of traffic to want to head over towards Worcester. That's why it shows two left turns there. And moving over towards the lake area and towards the end of this study and this master plan, close to the, basically on the Worcester Town Line, our cross-section again over here changed a little bit. They went a little bit up in width from 69 to 72. But we're looking again, and now no four-foot painted median here. And we try to reduce the shared-use path from the 10 feet down to eight feet in order to be able to provide the accommodations for all the modes of transportation. If you want to go to the next one, Paul. So starting where the first bridge west of Lake Street is and Blackstone and Flag Road streets come onto Route 20 here, we were looking at providing the two-way left turn lane to maintain the neighborhood access on either side, and even for people to come out and be able to complete the left turn onto Route 20. The main point is to also see that we are maintaining those two through lanes onto Route 20. This is one of the areas that we know there's quite a bit of congestion, especially in the afternoon, trying to go towards Worcester. And we've noticed a lot of those accidents happening in this area because people are trying to enter or exit any of the side streets, any of the driveways that are on Route 20. And they cannot do that very easily because of the traffic or people speeding when there is no traffic as well. Jumping over to, you can go over. Yep, you can go to the next one. Over where Anglin Lane is, and we're going towards the lakeside and Edgemere Boulevard intersections. I threw this up because this is the, exactly what that cross-section cut had shown you, where we're providing the no-four-foot median, just a regular double-yellow centerline, and those pet and bike accommodations on either side. But we have to be worried about the wetlands impacts over here. That's the shaded red, as all the other ones. We're looking at private property impacts as well. So there's a lot of things to keep in mind as we're talking about these improvements throughout the lake area. And our, end of our part of the project, the Route 20 Worcester side of the project has been done by another consultant, but we're tying into that one with a two-way left turn lane that ends over here at Huntington with just a left turn to get in there. That's our proposal at this time. They can always be modified, but at least that connection, unless the Worcester side of Route 20 master plan changes, it looks like a two-way left turn lane right now. This is another culvert here that goes over the lake and the pond on the south side, which may be a little bit too narrow to fit in even the four lanes that we were looking at at this point. But we're trying to stay consistent with the proposed cross-section and show you what those impacts are over here. So some wetland impacts over here, some of those property impacts over there if this were to go in. As for the next map and the next steps, we are working on something called a WikiMap, which is basically this whole plan, or the plans that we have here on paper, can go up on the internet. And each one of you can go up there and put some comments. When that goes on, we will notify you through the town and through the state representative, through any means possible so you know that it is on. And you can provide comments there that you haven't been able to give tonight to us, or even during the comment period, through the email that we're going to show on the next slide. As we've mentioned before, we're looking at providing a draft for review by the state and the town and the state representative by the early fall 2019. And the final report and the plan itself, we're looking at finalizing it towards the late fall, early winter of 2019. That will, that report will include some implementation discussion when these parts can be implemented, how they can be implemented, when, as we work continuously with the town and the state to figure out some of the, how to prioritize all these locations, as I mentioned down here. Some of them are, will be done by, or can be done by the private developments as they can fund some of these improvements. We know that Grafton Street is currently being worked at because they started their road safety audit, and there will be some design going on over there to improve and help with those safety concerns that they have right now, especially with such a high crash number. And then the new projects to be selected will be done, as I've mentioned, with the coordination between towns, state, and us as their, the state's consultant. And I believe that's it. Thank you very much for your time. We're open to comments right now.
Thank you, Bob. Yeah, so I'll just quickly explain how we'll handle the questions and answers, just so everyone knows, there is a microphone at the front so that your comments can, can be recorded on, and it's, the Public Information Wing is being televised so they can record that as well. Also, we would normally ask if there are any elected officials who would like to offer comments first. So I'll certainly open it up if there are any elected officials who want to offer comments at this time.
I just want to thank you all for being here. We've been working on this between the town and MassDOT and the consultant for a number of years. of years now, and I'm very glad to see a good turnout, and we're looking forward to your comments. This is, and then Joe said this in the beginning, this is meant to be a 20-year plan, so looking at 2017, basically when we started, through 2037, not everything that you saw on here tonight will be instantly done, and not all of it would be done necessarily by the state alone. So the goal of having a plan like this is that as development occurs along this corridor, you know, if we're negotiating with developers who are coming to town, we have a tool which we can talk to them about any potential traffic impacts that they're going to have, and how they could help do some of the mitigation on that could be part of this. So grateful for the work that's been done, and very much looking forward to hearing your comments tonight.
Thank you. So I, so at this point, then we'll open it up to questions, and certainly please feel free to come up to the microphone.
In your design, have you done any thoughts about what's gonna happen to Purinton?
Yes, yes. We've definitely looked into one way of doing this, like teeing up the intersection, as they say, instead of keeping as the angular entrance that you have right now, make, bring it into a right angle, so you can recreate a traditional T in the section, as they call it. So if we have the room to realign that and bring it in as a right angle, where you can make actual right turns instead of a hard right that you're making today, that's one idea that we're looking at right now. And the other one was to even make it a right in, right out, as it's tough to even make a left turns out of there, or even into Purinton. The Grafton Street signal, especially with its improvement, can be used to complete the left turn safer, but that's the idea right now for Purinton.
I guess my concern is that with the Market Basket project going in, people are gonna be going west on 20, going east on 20, and anybody who's living in Grafton or out that way are gonna scoot up Purinton to cut off the intersection. And we just, that seems like it's gonna be a concern to people who live in that area.
That's kind of the idea of making that, maybe the left turn a little bit tougher for that many people to make it out of there and send them towards the signal, instead of through a local neighborhood like that. Any turns like that to that local street today most likely happen, especially the right turns with a higher speed, so we don't want that to happen, and so that's a safety concern. By bringing it into a regular T or right angle in the section, you'd have to make those turns in a slower speed, so maybe we need to send them down by signal for those kind of moves to happen.
Right, we, what we looked at was keeping Purinton as a two-way, as a two-way street, and looked at really that the two options, the teeing it up, we would hope would slow speeds and discourage some of the use of it as a cut-through. The right in, right out would address the left turn out issue. There are certainly other things that could be, could be considered to try to cut down on the cut-through traffic on Purinton, such as making it perhaps one-way, or even maybe looking at closing it off at Route 20 entirely. Those are things that we really didn't look at as part of the study, but certainly if there's additional feedback on things that can be done related to Purinton, whether it's part of the Mass Works project, or part of the master plan, certainly discussions will continue to have with the town. Thank you.
The beating on Purinton is terrible, and then as it narrows down, when it passes Quillman Grove Drive, it's almost like one lane. And people come down there and then they realize, oh, I should slow down because there's somebody coming up. It's not wide enough at the very end where it heads towards Flynn's to the left and Rappin' to the right. It's not wide enough at all, and there's overgrowth of trees and...
And you've got the curve at the end, that's a blind curve with the house in there. So that needs to be...
Just go to the microphone, please, because otherwise they won't pick it up on the cable.
Couple of questions. Purinton, when you're going east, and you go through, where it comes over by the chef's area, little place there, it's like a blind curve, because it's turned right at the house, that's gonna be two lanes, one lane, that's gonna probably have to come up to more.
Purinton and Grafton?
Yes.
That's actually a town-owned and a part of this big study. This is more of the Route 20. We're not going that far out to those streets, we're only looking at the connections of the side streets onto Route 20 themselves.
On the slide for Edgemere, you have, I believe, you're closing the original entrance to Edgemere? And why is that?
That's actually a proposal from the Mass Works consultant themselves, it's not something that we have proposed, but they're closing it only to relocate it a little bit farther down within their own property in order to do that.
And then the distance between there and Purinton?
Right, so I think, I'm just gonna mention very quickly again, just, when it comes to what's shown here, we showed it to be able to show that we're matching into what the developer for the project has provided to us. This isn't what we're proposing, we're only proposing to keep the driveways the way it's being shown by the developer for Edgemere. Certainly, you know, certainly concerns that you have with that, you know, we can certainly take and have discussions with the developer on that, but that's not part of what we're proposing.
All right, thank you.
Getting back to Purinton, it's a really dangerous road, and I think you hit it on the head when you're considering making it just one-way, because you can have people coming up from Grafton Street trying to get onto Route 20, which is insane, and then you have people shooting off of Route 20 going down Purinton at really 60, 70 miles an hour, it's treacherous, and it's curvy, narrow, and I think, I've called so many times the police department, they really need to stop the flying down there. Having it two ways, and then you're adding bicycles on Route 20, I don't even understand why. I mean, it's nice that cyclists can have their space, that's dangerous. Even with what you're enlarging, it doesn't make any sense to me. I'm sorry.
Thank you for your comment. And I just, one thing for the bicycles, we, it's something we do have to consider, doesn't mean they're definitely going, it's something we have to consider, because it's part of the Health Transportation Directive of the state itself. We need to think of all modes of transportation and our only vehicles. But again, since it's not set in stone, it doesn't mean it's definitely going in there, so it's something to keep in mind.
So when you're talking to the state, I suggest you get them to come out there and look at that situation, if they still want bicycles down Route 20. I don't care if you're adding an extra lane on each side, they travel too fast, the trucks are ridiculous, they don't even stop at that intersection of Flynn's gas station anymore. What they do is blow the horn and keep going through it when it's a red light. We have so many accidents there, as you know. It's gonna get worse unless you really clamp down.
They pull out constantly in front of everybody. They have the rule of the roof.
Thank you for your comment.
Hi, I'm a Stony Hill resident. The question was, when we were trying to find out the accidents while coming in and out of Stony Hill and coming onto Route 20. So, so there are two things. One is, is there a way, the speed limit is like 55 on that area, so sometimes I have to wait two or three minutes just for, to get the no cars in that area, to get on Route 20, that's one thing. And the second thing, is there a way to lower the speed on Route 20, so that, like, crossing these junctions, Lake Street is have a signal, 140 has a signal, but Stony Hill does not have a signal, so if they slow down in that area, a sudden jump in the speed is not possible, but like overall in that corridor, lower the speed so that, I mean, there are teenagers in the summers generally, and they try to, and I know there are accidents for the teenagers, so just on those two things.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And so just, when it comes to the question about speed limits, it's something that Mass DOT can look at. We do have certain policies that drive how we set speed limits, and they're based on, one of the things that they're based on primarily is existing travel speed, so that does limit how much speed limits can be reduced, but it's something that we'll certainly look at as part of the entire corridors, to see what can be done when it comes to speed limits.
I like the idea of the additional lane for turning off 20. As someone who has to turn off 20 to get to their home without a light, it can be, you always had the fear of being rear-ended, is that a, is that a safe situation, adding that extra lane? Or is there still accidents that happen from getting rear-ended?
So basically, you're not supposed to be traveling down that lane, and you should only be entering when you need to make that left turn to access any of your side streets or driveways. So that is the use, only for that lane, you're not supposed to be driving down that one. So there shouldn't be that possibility for an accident. Again, that's gonna be more on the driver to themselves if they decide to do that, that move and go through there. But with the two lanes that were proposed on Route 20, we're hoping not to, because you're getting all the capacity you can on Route 20 now, so there shouldn't be a need for that. But yes, that two-way left-turn lane is only for left turns, not driving, not traveling down that lane.
Will there be sewer lines as part of this disconstruction to cut, to connect to the sewer work that's being done in Worcester, beyond the Worcester line?
So what I'll, what I'll say, and certainly if someone from the town wants to add anything in, they certainly can. So as part of the master plan, we focused strictly on the roadway side of things, and as part of particular projects, we work with the town to understand what could be done, or what should be done related to adding sewer and water infrastructure, and with that, I'll let Jeff Holland...
Jeff Holland, DPW Director. So as, we are currently in the process of designing Phase 1 sewer that would connect to the city of Worcester from Lake Street to the city of Worcester. Phase 2 goes from Lake Street to Centec Boulevard. And that, again, would be designed to send sewer to Route 20, I mean, to Worcester.
Because there are portions of Grafton Street coming into Route 20 from the north, the only sewer on that street is the stuff that can connect to the new developments.
Correct, there's no sewer up until you hit Crimson and...
That's right.
Hickory?
Correct.
We had the similar situation on Route 140, there is no sewer until you hit Gold Street.
So the second phase might address that?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, I guess some of these things are not, you know, 20 years out or within that time span, but it sounds like you have priorities on the Flynn area, do you have a timeframe sort of on the Flynn gas station area?
So the intersection of Route 20 and Grafton Street by Flynn's has been identified by Mast dot as a project for a few years now, because it was identified as, at the time, one of the top 200 high-crash locations in the state. And so we had, we're still in preliminary design, and what happened is, because of the amount of other work they got in, originally we looked at it, it was a matter of trying to do something low-cost, and what we quickly realized is, there wasn't something low-cost that could be done to really address the issues at the intersection, for all the reasons that Bob mentioned during his presentation. So we're still at the pre-25% design stage, and really at this point, what we're trying to do is, once the master plan is in place, be able to bring that back up to a 25% level design, and we need to identify funding. So right now, really, it's the ability of, the ability to find funding that's gonna more dictate the schedule than anything else, so it's probably still about, probably I'd say four to five years is probably about, about as best as I could guess, because we have to wait about that long to be able to get our next round of funding.
And I guess, is it dependent on you finishing the master plan, or is it depending on, they can go forward, I guess, on their own schedule?
It's, it can go forward on its own schedule. I mean, I think that basically, what we've identified here is a fairly reasonable plan. The part that our design consultant working on that project would have to do is really look very closely at all the design details, and at the right-of-way details, and certainly the area by Flynn's, that area by Grafton Street is all very tight, and so trying to fit that all in, and exactly where to place the roadway, all of those pieces, but, so it's really more, I think, the availability of funding is really gonna end up driving the schedule more than anything else.
You said the 90 crashes, is that per year, or was that the three years?
That was the three-year period.
Three years we studied, yes, three years, yeah.
I guess I wanted to go back to Stony Hill. Last time we talked, did you end up talking to the builder there? Do you know if they're moving forward, or how did that communication go?
Yeah, I believe, Bob, that we were able to verify that there were no impacts...
Yes.
...with what we were proposing.
Okay.
And we did verify that we did have a permit that was issued for their proposed access.
Just on the west end, I had a question about, because that's, there's a big hill there, and so currently, there's, it goes from one lane to two, and sometimes a lot, we use that as sort of an on-ramp to get out of Stony Hill, because it's not being really used. And it's useful, because in the wintertime, when it's icy and snowy, it's hard to get traction from a stop to 55 miles an hour. So is there gonna be an on-ramp still? I saw that you have two lanes going up the hill, but is there a third lane to help, or sort of a margin for you to get going from a stop?
So at this time, that Pointed Hill Farm, number two on the west end, on the west corner over here, actually is proposing their own right-turn lane to be able to access their property, as that's their only access point that they have, they cannot access their property from Stony Hill Road. So if they're gonna have that, it's a little bit tough to provide that, unless we start taking their own property to provide that, for you to be able to go on. But you do have the two-through lanes, as you mentioned, to be able to come up there, and we're hoping at least with providing some of these two-way left-turn lanes, anybody that might be on the slower lane, like the trucks trying to do that left turn in there, at least will be out of the way, and everybody can stay in the inside instead of the outside lane, traveling in the higher speed. So if you want to take your right onto Route 20, it's probably should be a little bit easier than it is today.
Okay.
As everybody has their own lane, kind of to complete turns, go a little bit faster in the middle lane, hopefully, we don't want them to go faster, but...
Yeah, okay, yeah, I'll have to see. That might be a difficult spot to pull out still, just without the extra lane to try and go up the hill. And then at Clues Street, are you doing anything about that? Because that comes in at a weird angle.
Yes, it's one area that we've noticed quite a few left turns, like cutting in there, maybe to access Route 20, as they have an access point onto, sorry, Route 140, as they have an access point farther down south. We have the similar idea as Purinton, kind of trying to see if we can tee it up, instead of making those turns in higher speed, make them on a slower speed. That then is a little bit more delving into, as there's not that much room to work with, as there are some properties around there, so we're still examining that portion, but that's at least one idea right now, to make it similar to the Purinton Street idea or ideas.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. I think we have a gentleman back there.
Bob, dovetailing onto that, Clues Street and one there, so you talked about the left turn. So what were your proposals for dealing with the way that the lane doesn't match today for folks who are making the on-ramp onto 20 East?
From Clues?
Yeah, from Clues. So 20 East to Clues, it, the lane, the second lane is barely available, and you end up with, you know, people trying to cut in and out. We see traffic issues from folks who were proceeding through the signal at Flynn's that morning, rushed through that side, never mind the...
And we can show you more on the paper as well over here, but the idea being with Route 20, still being provided with two lanes in each direction, if, and if you wanted to make the left into Clues, they would, they can have their own left-turn lane, that's the idea right now. You're going westbound on Route 20, you can get onto your left-turn pocket to access Clues. But the Clues itself will come in at the right angle, as I mentioned before, in order for in those turns to, out of Clues, it'd be easier, especially the left turn.
Okay, or would you consider limiting and not allowing the left turn from 20, so from 20 West to Clues?
That's not out of the question, we can definitely look into it. It just seems right now a lot of people are doing the most likely, because it seems like it can be a cut-through.
Yep.
But the idea right now was to kind of provide the space to do their left turn, but they can definitely be eliminated, it's not out of the question.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Vishal, I'm a resident of Stony Hill. My question may not be applicable just to Stony Hill, I think it's just more of a question around the process. What exactly is the process as a resident of Shrewsbury to request a speed breaker in an internal road? Because Stony Hill, being a curvy, you know, up-and-down hilly road, I often see people especially coming from Route 20, you know, coming into Stony Hill, and because of the ramp, right, they tend to pick up the speed at 30 or 40 in residence, and kids are playing sometimes, and we had to, you know, wave off people, saying, "Stop," but people just do that, it's human. So what can I do, or what can a resident of Shrewsbury do to request a speed breaker in a local internal road?
Do we want to, I, Jeff, because I only turned to them because it is a town on the street, and that's something that we can.
I was wondering if there's a process that I can follow, or get approvals from residents, get consensus, get signed up, you know, sheets from residents, get, you know, what can I do for that?
So Stony Hill Drive is a town owned in the Board of Selectmen of the road commissioners. However, I can say that the town will not put up like a speed bump, we do not do that as it damages plows, and so we do not do that. It's also a problem with emergency vehicles, and the fire department has requested we do not put them up. So we do not, and will not, would not recommend to the road commissioners, speed bumps on any public street.
Even though it's a security issue?
That's correct, because security that won't stop security. And actually, I have been involved with projects in which there's been speed bumps, they've used them at schools, and the kids use them as ramps, they get on top of it, put their emergency brakes on, use them as a way to get the car started, and then use them as ramps. So they actually become a detriment, and most of the schools have now since removed them because of that.
Interesting, thank you.
Thank you.
Does knock it basket coming before all this roadwork or after? Does anybody know?
That's in the works right now, as part of the Mass Works project, but I don't think I had the timeline for that exactly, as they're, I think they're in the very early stages of design themselves for improvements onto their 20 section with Lake Street in the section.
I'm Kristen Lassie, Assistant Town Manager, and I can tell you that the Edgemere project filed with the planning board last Wednesday, so there'll be a public hearing on the process with the planning board on July 11th. I can also tell you that the town, in concert with the developer, received a grant for $3.75 million to improve the Lake Street and Route 20 area, as well as the new driveway at the development in Route 20, and we are currently working through that design now. We will probably see the improvements starting in that area in about a year from now, and it'll probably take about an 18-month period. So that is one project that we are working in concert with MassDOT on, we're working on the improvements, the lanes in both directions, the shared use path, the sidewalks, and the light improvements. So that is one project that we do see funding on the horizon to be completed as part of this master plan.
Are there any other, any other questions?
Hi, it's John Vedder. Getting back to Clues Street, something I've noticed is that if I'm traveling westbound on Route 20, and I want to go south on 140, my GPS always tells me to take a left on the Clues Street instead of going through the Cloverleaf onto 140. So as the Department of Transportation for the state, is it possible that you guys could potentially start coordinating with the GPS manufacturers and suggest that some routes should not be proposed because they're just simply unsafe?
We can, we can certainly try. I've done that with other things, and I still haven't been successful at being able to tell Google what to, what to do, but.
Because I do notice that on my route to work, Google suggests I take roads that I would consider to be residential streets. And as I travel down those streets, I notice there's three cars in front of me and three cars behind me doing the exact same route, and for miles, and I'm thinking, Google's clearly found a road that's, that's shorter, and is telling everybody to take that route, and that may not necessarily be where the Department of Transportation would like to send cars, and perhaps a joint venture with them would help some of the traffic problems.
I certainly appreciate the suggestion, and we'll certainly, we'll certainly try to see what we can do.
I know you've pointed out the Flynn's section already, and you've pointed out all the places there is one lane, and we have two. And the improvements with the streets that would have the place to be able to turn in makes sense from my perspective, but I think about the streets that try to pull out onto Route 20, who wait a good 20 minutes to pull out onto Route 20, and the speed is an issue. The speed is an issue all along there, and it's an issue because, she is right, the trucks blow through the lights at Flynn's. Sometimes you can sit at that light at Flynn's on Grafton Street and not get out of there for at least two or three times. And the other thing is, is that on Lake Street, it's kind of like, that changes so that the people on Route 20 can turn, but the people who are coming onto Route 20, they either take their life in their hands when there's a red light on the other side, because there used to be something there, there isn't anymore. So what happens is, they all speed up, they know people are going to go out that time because they've got that, so that intersection is blocked a lot. And I live off Route 20, it took me 20 minutes tonight to come across all of Ave onto Route 20, and then I had to pray, because the guy that was down by the Edgemere, down by the trailer park place and right before the bridge, they see you pulling out, and they speed up because they don't want you to pull out in their lane of where they're going. So overall, and I, and I identify with the people on Stony Brook, because even driving up that part of Route 20, you like take your life in your hands, and it's not even the trailer trucks, it's everybody, because in the morning, they're trying to get to work, and they're in a hurry, and when they're coming home, they're trying to get home, and they have to use that access, which is fine. The trailer trucks don't bother me if they follow the speed limits, and they don't. But the commuters who come there, who commute because they don't want to take the Mass Pike and they want to take Route 20, just like they do over on Route 9, they don't, they don't mind any speed limits, and in the middle of all this, we have crosswalks that go across Route 20, which to me made no sense when they did it, and all of us in the neighborhood say, why would they put a crosswalk like that? It's just, it's out there, no one's going to stop, there's not even, the sign is way before it, and the way they're flying, it's not going to happen, so.
Thank you, thank you for your comment. Concerning the speeds, I mean, that's definitely something that can be looked into, and maybe even signings right now can go up there to help at least reduce that a little bit, or make people pay attention to the signals, number one, and even just to, through what area they're driving, maybe just to give them a notice that you should slow down, you're doing through a little bit of a neighborhood or a busy area to not go that fast.
And I understand that the police sit, like going up the hill, because they want to slow the cars going into Puritan. My mother being a perfect example, three years ago, who decided she wasn't going to turn on Route 20 because there was a trailer truck behind her, so she whipped into Puritan not even knowing that had changed, and got into a car accident. So herself, thank God, and then we took her license away, but, you know, the fact is, is that the speed stuff that I think on Route 20, on that part of the Pike, I think that, does that belong to the town, or is that the state police? Because that's a good question, because there's very few, if any, state police there ever, and the road things that are set up by the town are not set up anywhere along there. They're set up so that they're going into Puritan, which I think is a life and death situation, having lived in town my whole life. And the other places that, which is at the top of the hill where Flynn's is, which is, I try not to even go through there if I can't, if I don't have to, at between 4:00 and 6:00. You just have to hope. I used to go to the high school, I used to be there by 5:00. I used to leave my house at 3:30, just so I could get out of Route 20, and then I started going down Lake Ave and up the other way, because you can't get out of there. But, and it's because of the speed more than anything else.
Thank you, thank you for your comment.
Hi, I live in Stony Hill Drive, and, you know, we've already talked about that a lot, but sometimes, you know, I actually want to go left, but the traffic, you know, the timing of brakes and so forth, and the speed, sometimes you decide to go right. And I wasn't sure if you talked about some place to maybe do a turnaround, so that you can actually go back the other way, because, you know, unintended consequences. So today, I went out, I went right, and then I went up Gold Street, which is very small and windy and so forth, I mean Cherry, excuse me, and then, so it's, it's very small, so you end up getting a lot of more traffic, I think, on Cherry from people doing that type of thing. If you could provide a turnaround, then you wouldn't get some of these onto the side streets. But if you're not, then if we could take a look, because that's an unprotected left onto Cherry, which is just one more dangerous thing, once you finally gotten onto 20, now you're sitting there with an unprotected left, so if you could think about those things.
Yes, I should mention that, at least for the eastern section, when we looked into Centec Boulevard and Cherry, see the Route 20, the left turn that we're providing on Route 20 going eastbound had enough space for you to be able to do a U-turn.
Okay.
And if you faced the signal correctly, you had your own protected left turn, for you to be able to do that. But certainly for a turnaround that's closer, it can definitely be looked into. The two-way left turn lane that we keep looking into can be something that you come out as a right turn out of Stony Hill, and if you can access that a little bit farther down the road, only as a vehicle, be able to use that as a U-turn, I don't see trucks being able to, because you need a bigger pullout on the side of it to do that.
We don't care about trucks.
Yeah, only for vehicles, that they should be able to do something like that.
Okay, great, thank you.
Good evening, Ryan Lidozki. Can you tell me the speed limit through that section, or all sections of 20? Will it vary, or is there one set speed?
Under the proposed conditions? I think there'd be something we'll be looking into as we're building this out, because it can, they can definitely change. I mean, it's 50 right now, at quite a bit of this section, and I think it goes down to 40 towards the lake areas, it's an area cross-section, if I remember.
Right, I mean, I, I think that that's, that's a challenging question to answer, because our process is that we, we would establish it based on, on the design of the entire corridor, and based on speeds along the corridor. I would imagine that it would probably still have some varying, would vary somewhat based on the different parts of the corridor that you're on. Certainly, MassDOT has tried to, on newer speed regulations, has tried to create more consistency, so not have a speed limit that changes every quarter mile like we do on some of our roadways. But we would look at, it really, at part of relooking at the speed zoning, we would look at different segments along the corridor and try to strike that balance between areas where there's a need to have a different speed, and yet not having the speed limit change all the time. So we would, it's hard to answer the question for sure, but we would be trying to be as consistent as we could.
Well, what's concerning to me is how you come about the speed limits. Has the state looked at another model of how to gauge the speed? So what you're telling me is if you have 80 cars, and they're doing 70 miles an hour, and 70 of them are doing 70 miles an hour, you're going to post that road at 70 miles an hour, is that what you're telling me?
So that's, that's not exactly how it, how it works, but because there are certain, certain maximums, and there are other things that are factored in. However, our policy is based on, on the idea that 85, that a majority of people drive at a speed that is reasonable for the roadway. In terms of process, the way we establish it is generally a national standard that's been established. There is certainly some discretion, and we use that discretion when we look at other factors such as the way we would, the way we drive the road ourselves, people drive it who understand the, the character of the roadway and what's going on, we look at crash data, we look at other things related to the geometry of the roadway and how the roadway acts. But no, I'm not aware of any specific effort by our headquarters to change our procedure for how we establish speed limits.
With all due respect, if you look at Route 20 in Charlton, now, there was a fatal accident there, that's a very, 50 miles an hour on a road that's four lanes wide with no barrier, and I'm a commercial driver, that is my occupation, I stay off of Route 20, it's a, that's a dangerous speed to have that type of volume of automobiles on, and you could see on Route 20 where I think the state stepped in and a Jersey barrier was put in there. Is there room to allow a barrier if you need to put a barrier on this particular project?
So the, when, when we looked at the, at the corridor, we felt that on this corridor, it made sense to provide more access, which is why, instead of going with something that's a median, we went with generally the two-way left turn lane. In those areas where we're showing the two-way left turn lane, that is wider than the cross-section that would be needed for some sort of center median barrier, so it could certainly be accommodated in the future if it were needed. There are a few segments, as Bob mentioned, where things are narrower with either the four-foot buffer, or in the one spot by the 140 bridge, where it's just a W O center line. In those sections, you would need to widen to get a barrier through.
How many cars, no, you have a left turn lane, how many cars can stack up in that particular area?
They were built, well, they're built, sorry, they were shown right now over here to allow maybe about five cars to go over there, seeing what we had as volumes and maybe what can be projected volumes, but again, that's not a set length at this time, it's just something that we've seen from the numbers that we see today making those left turns. If I can backtrack a little bit with the median, to my experience, anything like a physical median barrier to separate those opposing lanes or the opposing flow of traffic can actually make you go faster, as people don't have to worry about somebody going against them. So that's my experience, and I can point you to highways that have the wider median, grass medians, or even Route 9 that has the barrier between there. I believe that the experience there is people go faster, because they don't have to worry about somebody opposing them. Not to say that we should use opposing traffic as a deterrent to speed, but we need to think about that, whether the median might actually make speeds go higher.
I just hope that Mass Highway would take into account of the speed on the road. 50 to me is way too, way too fast for that road with the, with the projected volumes, with market basket, you've got 200 apartments going in next to it, which to me is ridiculous. So now that opens up that whole corridor to more residential development, but I think 40 miles an hour should be the top speed limit for that route, but thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. So if, so if there aren't any more questions, what we'll do is, we'll conclude this part of the meeting, but certainly will stay around as long as people are interested to review the plans at the, at the front of the room and answer any questions you have. Thank you so much, everyone, for coming.